It's it over there too, right? Coming and that that keyboard can be moved.
Yeah, you can Jim if you want. Oh, great. Thank you, George.
More. You have one for yourself, George, or okay, so maybe one for Kathy and.
One for Kathy. I'll call this meeting.
Pass on my copy. Thank you.
Call me to order. Minutes from April sixteenth. Oh, thank you, Kathy. Yes, Jim, I put you as alternate.
Well, full member.
Full member. So any comments on the minutes?
I have none.
I had a couple. I think it's nothing major. On page one. Number one B. That comment about emergency management director, I did thought we should add that Willer commented. That Temple's emergency management director. It reads like it's an official policy and I just wanted to put it in like. He made this statement, but.
George.
Yeah, we. There still has to be a formal process to appoint somebody.
Yep. Good catch.
On page two. The bullet item at the top is the owner required to purchase flood insurance. Just on that last sentence. Are required by the program to have flood insurance if that property is in a special flood hazard area. So not everybody's required. And then under D. It's like the well, start on the third line down Kyle explained that the maps are expected to be finalized in May twenty twenty five. And I think he was talking about the South Hegan watershed maps. We hadn't talked about the Kentucky ones.
Yep. Anybody else? Accept the motion.
Make a motion to.
Second.
Okay, already vote?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yes. Steve.
Oh, yes, sorry.
George, yeah, very, yes, minutes are approved as amended. Invitation for public comment. You don't have anybody? Okay, so. The old business first item would be the National Flood Plane Insurance Program FEMA Flood Maps Update. Do we do? We want to take that off? I think we had decided that we're going to wait till it could be next spring.
Yes, so I I have a just quick update on that because I I sent her an email and thank them for coming and then I said, you know, we were talking specifically about the South Hegan maps. What's the news on the Kentucky maps? And they said that both of those maps are being. Held, I guess, because they've run into some issues with Nashua and. A flood area there, so there. The new date is now twenty twenty six.
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, it could change, but.
Wow.
So, yes, I would recommend we.
Take it off.
Take it off for now because. Who knows?
Wow.
We're not a high priority area, you know? Which is unfortunate, but that's the way it is.
Yeah, unless we're to scream and holler and say.
Yeah, or God forbid some flood disaster happened in the meantime, let's just hope that doesn't happen, but yeah. Have more pressing issues in other places.
Do we have any update on the zoning ordinance?
Well, I guess I would ask if everyone reviewed what I handed out last time, which is what we had voted or what people voted on. Did everything look okay from what I drafted there? Yeah.
Yeah.
To match, okay, so then I guess so, I mean, it's a process, so I've done a first pass through. The whole document. And then I'm going to do one more pass and then try to divide it up into sections and so then I'll email out sections. To people to look at to check. If that makes sense.
Yeah, but we were all going to pick a section.
Yeah, yeah, so I did a first pass, but I want to do another pass and then come up with like. Some standard formatting standards so that you know what you're looking for. And I'll try to. Write up what I know has changed, what you know, what I know I changed is to for clarity, but. Yeah, I don't want to give too much because I want you to catch things and not. So that's where that stands.
Okay, natural resources regulatory audit. I did go to the. On April seventeenth. Was a nice presentation. And Kathy was obviously there because she's on conservation. And. Yeah, I think we're. They're going to finish up this summer, right? Is that?
By July for sure, hopefully sooner, I think, was what they were saying. I did email Jeff today for an update, but I haven't heard back, but I'm sure he was outside today, so.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah. Any news I'll I'll share. Same that goes for the mapping. The next item on the agenda.
Yeah, what what was this site? Russ on here with C. Technologies.
Yeah, so this is the tax map updates. So not the GAS mapping, so the. There were a couple corrections that needed to be made, so they sent a new batch of maps in a variety of formats. So I sent it to Russ because I wasn't able to open the files on my computer, so he opened the file, he has them all, he put them on a Google Drive. So we can share the link if people want to link to the information. He also shared this with Jeff Littleton at Moosewood. So that they can use the new maps for updating the other maps that they're working on for the master plan. So the other piece of that, which I, you know, rested here, but I had asked. For it to be accessible for Carol in the office, so if somebody comes in with a question, she knows how to look it up online. I don't know if that's happened yet, but. That was the other step in the process, but the website has the link to all the latest maps, so that's all. That's all taken care of.
So like the hop grant. How will we?
Sure, so. We finished our interviews in the month of April and we are meeting next week to discuss next steps. That is my current. I don't think we have had a new update since we.
I did my interview with Kathy. I was trying to further get. So as far as. The the process for this, what were your thoughts on? Where we would go with this, you know, once everything's completed in the month was was it June we were gonna Carol and.
I, yeah.
Ivy, we're hoping.
So to have. I mean, you can add Christine, but I mean, we're planning to have a recommendation for changes in zoning changes. As an outcome of these exercises to give to. In addition, we also have all the updates. To our master plan that Carol and I have done. And I don't know, Christine, how was that? How does that get wrapped?
In like. Yes, separate. I think it's two separate processes because the master plan, I mean, you probably know this, the master plan chapters, once you guys are. Happy with it, it comes to us and we'll do whatever review and changes that we want to make to it. We have a hearing to adopt the changes.
So it's a hearing to adopt.
Yeah, it's a planning board vote, not a town vote.
Right, right. And then for the zoning stuff, that's obviously something that we work on maybe throughout the year, and if we were going to present something, we'd want to have it. Be ready by the fall, right?
Your late fall, yeah.
Yeah, to have a first hearing and you last year was December and I I think that calendar worked okay, except that we all got sick in January. So we didn't have the second hearing like we had hoped, but. That would give an opportunity to have a second hearing if we wanted to make any changes.
Right.
So you're thinking that you'll have your recommendations for the board by.
And in June, so I I believe Kathy, but we want to we want to wrap this up.
And then and then as a board, we can start working on.
Right, whatever their.
If we're going to have a forum or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Involve the public some more and come up with if we're going to have anything for. For March.
Right.
Yeah, and and you know, things like George's pointing out when the the union leader. All the other towns and everything that we thought we were ahead of the curve. And these other towns have already been working on it for several years doing and already making zoning changes in regards to how so.
Yeah.
I don't I don't know that will, I think it'll be should be a positive thing. ADU seems to be, when you say Carter ADUs, probably the. The hot button, I mean, if you had to guess what was going to be the thing that. The first and foremost, hasn't changed.
Probably ones that like love hanging fruit, but would be that people that I've spoken to were generally. In favor of. I don't want to speak before.
Yeah, right, pretty sure, right, yes.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
I will say, and I I don't know if you want to talk about this now, but. Some legislative stuff has been happening. There was a hearing today. I don't know what the outcome was on the hearing for the ADUs, but the House. Killed the bill that had four different. Proposed changes, nothing that we were necessarily looking at. So I don't think it was a huge deal for us, it's more for. Bigger towns, but. That's just something to keep an eye on. And there's the other bill NHMA opposes, so I don't know what will happen. That's the one with the ADU stuff.
All the HB twelve ninety one. The parking of the.
Yeah.
Accessory.
Right. So I don't know where that will go. It did pass the House and it's the hearing with today was in the Senate, so. If I get an update, I'll email it out, but we'll have to see what how that all plays out.
Okay, and so the subdivision regulations, are we still waiting?
Yeah, Joe Driscoll, so he was on vacation and I'm fear that he's forgotten about us, so I asked Russ if he'd heard back and he hadn't, so he said he would touch base with him when he gets back, but. Might have to. Light a fire under him to.
Russ was going to contact him?
Russ, yeah, because I had put Russ directly in touch with him because he had questions about the changes and so Russ was that he was overseeing that.
Okay.
But I generally do that. I was doing the nudging.
I'll nudge Russ, I guess, that would be the thing to do.
Or just touch base with him and see if he's had any luck reaching him when he gets back.
Right now, he's.
Yeah, having more fun than.
Exactly. I'm jealous. Okay. So Southwest Regional Planning. Commissioned their director. Tim Murphy is retiring. And the new director is Todd Horner. And he's going to come in and meet with us on May twenty first. It could be our next meeting.
Mm hmm.
And you've already set that.
I told him I'd pencil it in and that I'd bring it to the board and if everyone is in agreement, I would confirm. He did ask if there was anything in particular we wanted to talk about with him, so I listed a few things, but I wanted to open it up and you can. Tell me if you agree or not, I don't. So I asked him to just do an overview of SWRPC, what they do and who their staff, who they have on staff. Talk about any current projects that are happening in the region. Talk about technical assistance in the past, they have offered that, but they haven't had the staff to do it most recently. I mean, remember, we wanted to use them for the hop grant, but they couldn't fulfill that for us. And I. Had just listed ADUs as one potential change that we could use technical assistance with if. We get some grant funding or if we decide to go that route. I asked him to talk about the Complete Streets Program, that's through SWRPC that hopefully everyone knows is happening right now in town about the survey. So he's working with Lily and the Bell and CAC, there's a whole committee that's working on that, so I asked him to just talk about that a little bit. And then I let him know about the Highway Garage. Committee too, and if there were any services they could offer or if there were any grants they were aware of, that kind of thing. That's that was the list off the top of my head.
That's a lot. Think it's worth his while to drive down here.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Covered everything on my list.
Yep.
Okay.
And driveway regulations, would we do? We need him for that or we already at a point where we don't?
Well, they did a pass of it already. I don't know with the new change legislative changes.
Maybe his comment on these regulations. Working through, I think we understand last year's.
Right. Okay.
You know, what is, you know, but there actually will be an interesting discussion about his opinion of last year's regulation and if he's aware of any pending ones that we should resort in that.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I know that.
For them and.
Well, the state has one they're looking at. But it's just to expedite the process for driveway approvals, so and there was another thing I sent you, wasn't there? About driveways, didn't I send you an email recently? Something came through.
I think I think I already had.
You might have already had it. It was more proposed legislation. Related to driveways and I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, this is more on the. The state approval timeline.
That's it.
Specifying the state shall approve.
Yeah.
Or if it magically gets approved.
Right. So, yeah, driveways on state roads, not town road. Something to be aware of, but not necessarily something we need to put in our.
So I was gonna say, that's a great segue right into driveway regulations, work session, but probably should just. You know, get a poll or vote on. Christine's ideas for Todd Horner. Lot of material there to talk about. Yeah, everybody's okay with that. Okay, well, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
I'm assuming the date works already.
He's throughout two dates, May twenty first or June fourth.
Yeah, we don't have any.
The application.
Two weeks from now, so why not?
Okay.
If we can do the twenty first.
Okay.
And then so then where do we stand, Murray, with the driveway regulations?
I still need to work with the fire chief and review them and. Within the person, but I'll send him a reminder and send him the latest ones again tonight.
Well, quick, quick beating the, how did you like to know? Jim, did you you went, was it you got to that? And how did that go?
It was good, it was good, very informative. You know, I came into this not knowing the whole lot about. I'd like to know a part of it, so. And I and then everybody where I started took the email thing to heart.
Yeah. Considering it myself, but I already have another email and I just don't want to have four.
I know, I I don't, that's why I didn't do it either.
Yeah.
How many can you check? Monitor.
Well, I, you know, my, I've had my personal since. Email started, it is just, I mean, everything goes through that and and I was happy to say, yeah, maybe it was separate to stuff.
Just for a planning board account, yeah.
Yeah, so it worked well for me.
Yeah, I noticed you changed yours as well.
It makes it so much easier because I also have Comic Con going in there.
Right.
Steering committees, I mean.
Yeah, Kathy, do you have anything? Sorry, I jumped right into the webinars and different things here. How's everything going with you? Everything.
Before we leave that last topic, Murray, you're the plus sign in your email doesn't work. Um, but I'm just realizing I never, I was waiting to see if it was going to bounce because I didn't know. So I haven't sent you all the updated version with the plus sign inverted, like the last version that I sent to you of all the contact info is correct, except that Murray's. Needs a plus sign. Do you want me to resend that to you all or have you already?
I would love a new.
Okay, well, no, what was it that was it a dash originally?
I I put a dot in, I was. A dot would signify it's completely for email accounts. If you put a plus sign in. Gmail ignores it, sends ignores the stuff past the website, so sends it to your original email, but then you can set a filter and then put all the plus. PB into a different phone.
Interesting.
Yes.
I'm not a complete feature. I haven't made it work yet. I've I know about it, but I haven't actually.
A lot of impact and features. So I'm hoping to go down and meet with Kara tomorrow. To get 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 the same page with her with the payroll. Yeah. Yep, so I think we I think that'll be all take care of tomorrow. So anything else for you, Kathy, or that?
Um. It was it was that right to know what in town I was taking. Oh, my God, it's crazy. I'm really helpful information.
Yeah.
I I definitely, it was definitely worthwhile. I definitely learned something that. Um, the one question I wanted to ask the. I know we're not quite there yet, but the filing project. The like the next step, if we're going to do something, probably means that we're going to have to look into like purchasing Dropbox or something like that. Would that be something that we're going to hold off until the fall so that we, you know, would maybe price it out instead of putting it in the budget? In other words, is there anything you want me to do now? Or do we want to?
I I would think pricing it out now, I do you do you know anything about how much it costs? Because there is money in the budget for supplies, which. You've not used, it's like a hundred dollars, it's not a lot, so I don't know if that's enough. But yeah, it'd be good to know if we need to budget for it next year. But if we can, if we have money this year, you know. That's my thought on it and.
That's fine. Yes, I was skipping over here, so.
You did skip over.
I was, so how did the how did the meeting go in the?
I went to that meeting. I have some. Comments or or things to share, I guess, about it. There was. I'm still not really clear on where they are in the process because they keep. Having hearings, but they haven't accepted the application as complete yet, so they haven't triggered the ninety day window. But so but they're talking about some really detailed. Bits of the application, so I'm I did send an email to the chair, but I haven't heard back from her to just clarify for me where they are in the process. But there wasn't a butter there who has retained legal counsel. There was a former planning board member there who had a pretty detailed list of concerns for the project. That's all available on the new switch planning boards Dropbox and has all the files and they're attached to the minutes actually from this is the April seventeenth meeting. I can just sort of give you a quick overview. They made a change to the entrance based on feedback they had received because of a wetland crossing. They revised the plan originally was thirty three, they revised it down to twenty nine. Based on some feedback they had received, there was another question about wetland impacts, and this is all for. What do they call it? The. The yield plan. So not the cluster plan, so this is just to show how many lots. They could get if it was a traditional subdivision, which determines how many lots they could put in for a cluster subdivision, even though it's not. This plan, the yield plan is not the one that's going to be. Developed. They have to do this. I don't, we've never done a cluster subdivision.
Oh.
Been fascinating, I have to say, the whole process has been really interesting. But there's also a gravel pit here, so there's a lot of really, there's a lot of factors to consider and slopes and. You know, the gravel pit is still operating, so the current conditions are changing every day, you know, it's. So for them to try to guess, well, is it a twenty five percent slope, which they don't allow development at twenty five percent low? Percent slope. It maybe is today, but maybe next week it won't be, so it's it's really kind of complicated. So they're talking about grading, they have a plan. Reclamation plan for the gravel pit once they close. Yeah, it's. Then, you know, they looked at it as. No development is allowed within twenty five percent, but Fieldstone said development means housing, septic drainage, driveway. And but not access roads, so they. Yeah. So the the former driveway, I guess that was all I highlighted initially, former, sorry, former planning board member that commented, just thought the. And agreed with the land use attorney that the number should be nineteen, not twenty nine. Based on their review of the regulations. The lots weren't all rectangular or square shaped, there are some of them are really kind of funky shaped, so. That was another issue. Yeah, we talked about the reclamation. At the end of the day, what they asked for is. The plan to show twenty nine lots, which was what the engineer recommended. They wanted to demonstrate that the buildable area of the back lots, which have the steep slopes. And questionable access, I guess I should say, because that has to cut through when a butter's property. And the butter has given permission for it to be used for this plan. Understanding that is not going to be the plan that's implemented. The shape of the lots, they want to see all the lots to be square or rectangular side shaped. And then they will review to see if the application is complete. So those four things. May fifteenth is the next hearing. And they are considering having their legal counsel get involved because it's the letter from the butter. So. Yeah. It was a lot.
Lot more than I thought.
It's a lot, yeah, so I mean, the this is this is all on their site, but this is the document. That the former planning board member put together with her concerns. She looked at every lot and said whether or not it met certain criteria. And that's how she came up with her number and then the letter from the attorney, it's Dr. Mackey. He's what he hired an attorney to look at it and that.
Before or against?
I think he felt based on the attorney that he brought in that nineteen was a more reasonable number than twenty nine. That's.
It's going to be a big change for him.
It is going to be a big change for him. There was still just. Yeah, there was still discussion about the roads, especially fish row leaning into temple and safety and fire, emergency vehicles, being able to. Fire, emergency vehicles, being able to get in and out. They haven't said anything about a traffic study, which, again, I don't know where they are in the process. So I don't know if they're gonna ask for that after they accept the application as complete or if. Because typically, regional impact comes after, but I don't. It was really unclear to me.
So you want to speed on this project, Jim? Do you know where it is?
Sorry.
We all should, if you haven't, uh, drive out Fish Road in Temple. And, uh, at the end, when it turns to New Up Switch, you'll get to see the quality of the road and, and how narrow it is. And then, I would say it's probably about a mile and a half past town line. On the right, if you're heading towards, it'll, it turns to Appleton Road. And there's, it's quite obvious, you can look off and you can see the sand pit, the gravel operation. And that's where the proposed subdivision is. And our interest from Temple's standpoint really is just traffic.
And, and road impact.
And may, might, who knows, until there's a study done, that might not, it might be minimal. You know, I guess, you know, it all depends. I've never, none of us have. Google mapped it to see how quick it is to get to Milford and Peterborough from there. If it, if you go through Temple, is it quicker? Cuz if it is, and, and that may, might, you know, create some more traffic, but that's our interest. As to why we're, you wonder why we're attending those switch meetings and, and having an interest in this is because.
He was wondering.
Yeah, it was the regional impact question because it is such a large development. But we also did receive a letter from, um, someone who lives on the road who had concerns about it. And has concerns currently about the traffic on the road, I think mainly, um, trucks, the large trucks coming in and out. The delivery trucks, but that's everywhere in town, but there were some big constructions, you know, the dump trucks coming up and down the road, so she had. Some concerns about additional trucks, if I'm remembering. It is possible. They're cutting through, yeah. So, yeah, the, the next one is May, what is it, May fifteenth, the next hearing. May fifteenth at seven twenty. If anyone wants to watch it live or zoom in. You can also resume link and they'll have all the attachments with the plans and the letters and everything. Um, in their Dropbox for the meeting with the agenda.
And Kathy, I just want to back up, I, I, sorry that I didn't include you or ask you. Uh, obviously, being on the Conservation Commission, when we had the. The, uh, what, what do you call it?
The natural resource.
Natural resources meeting, um, what was your take on the, the attendance was pretty good, I thought, and.
Yeah, I was.
What was your take on the presentation and what did you get, take out of that?
I think it was. It was upbeat, which was. I mean, it, it makes sense knowing who Jeff is, but, um. There was, there was definitely habitats in town that are valuable. There are, um, it's fascinating. He also mentioned, we have, we don't have whole world forests, but we have old trees. Um, I know through the Cooperative Extension of Natural Resources Program, they have a big tree program. I don't know if any of our whole world trees would. Yeah, um, but it could be something that we want to save, but again, it's gonna. We're gonna have the Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow night to be able to discuss, you know, next steps and that's. Trying to figure out how to, how we can best protect it. Um, protect the, you know, the habitats of importance, which we definitely have in town. There's definitely things worth protecting. Um, but how to do that, how to, you know. Not, not every landowner wants to protect things. So anyway, um, I'll, I'll be able to share more. But one of the things that's a little bit confusing is that, that's the natural resources inventory. Whereas the audit is going to be more specific to what. Maybe what we can do with zoning to, um, to protect those things. As opposed to just conserving land outright, so I'm fascinated to see. Where that will go and if we can really make some. You know, can, can, can we tell people if you have whole world, you know, trees on your property, like you need to protect them? I don't know. What is, what is, like, an old, what's an example of that? Basically, it's one of the, it's a tree that, cuz he was saying in, wasn't that eighteen eighties, nineties, new, eighteen thirty?
Eighteen fifties or something like that, that, yeah, the sheep farming. Ended because the cotton, cotton was invented. And so nobody, the textiles went from cotton to, excuse me, from wool to cotton. So, eh, go ahead, Nick.
Before that time, everything pretty much was cut for pasture. But these trees, they'll often be around, um, stone walls. So they'll be, they just weren't cut. Or they're in areas that were just super difficult to clear, so they didn't go in there.
I think I've got two.
I got at least one.
Sure, there's a lot of them, right?
Yeah, and it's right on the rock wall too.
So it might be. I think it'd be cool to, to have. I don't know, I actually don't, I don't recall looking at the map, whether he marked where, like, the whole world's trees were. And of course, if they're on private property, then he's not going to mark them anyway.
Yes, I mean, if you drive around, there's a couple that are on the stone walls adjacent to the road.
Kathy, was the, was it recorded on Zoom?
Yeah, and it actually, we, the, so, there is a link to the recording. I had to put the recording on the Comic Con's, um, Google Drive. Uh, cuz we couldn't upload it directly, but there is a link, so you can watch it.
On the town website?
Yes, on the Comic Con page.
Okay.
You just figured it was something that would be useful.
Yeah.
You know, until the next inventory.
Right.
Yeah, I wasn't able to get there.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was, I thought it was, it was, like you said, the energy was good. It was a pretty good turnout.
How many people?
He's a good speaker too. He's a Jeff, um.
Littleton.
Little, Littleton or. Uh, yeah, I would say, yeah, about that, yeah. Um, so as far as upcoming. Events, uh, to attend, there's one on Thursday. Is that already, you think that's too late for anybody to go to?
The hard road to travel.
Hard road to travel. If anybody wanted to go, um, there is a, what was there a section on? Was it driveways that was, would be with us to us? Those driveway regulations I saw there.
Yeah, you both did, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's specifically, uh, speaking about driveways, I think it'd be the only thing you would get, it's talking about roads, class five roads, uh. You know, highways and, but it does specifically have a section on driveways, so that'd be the only thing, I think. That we'd get out of that if somebody wanted to go to that. And that's Thursday. And then on the eleventh, which is the Saturday, is the, the annual, um, spring. Office of Plane Development, um, Conference. Did anybody, does anybody?
I signed up.
You did, okay, yeah. In person?
No, it's all online.
It's all online.
It's free and it's all recorded, so you can watch them later if you don't wanna spend your whole Saturday. Watching videos or online in a conference.
And then, uh, on May twenty-second. Um, there's this. Bedford, um, Dollars and Cents of Multi-Family Development. I don't know if you all. I think, I think you went forward.
I did, yeah, they're promoting it heavily. I'm kind of on the fence on it, to be honest. It looks interesting, but I'm not sure. Temple's ready for that.
Okay.
But. But it is, the, I think what I found interesting about it was that it goes into detail about what it takes to actually build housing. The costs involved and the steps the developer would have to take, and it is designed for planning and zoning board members. To give you that perspective when someone comes before you with an application.
So we would put ourselves in the shoes of the developer and builder. Know what they're going through or what they're.
Right, so that, I found that intriguing. But it is all day.
Yeah, that's an in-person.
In-person, um, in Bedford.
On a Wednesday.
On a Wednesday, yeah. I mean, I'm, yeah, it is limited attendance too. Um, but I, there's still promoting it, so they must still have spots available. I mean, if, I guess I, I, I guess I'd be interested in going if you all wanna pay for me to go. Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars, yeah, I guess. It's up to, I mean, I'm okay with you doing it.
I think there needs to be a motion cuz there's money involved.
Yeah, okay, all those in favor of, uh, spending twenty-five dollars for Christine to go to. The Dollars and Cents Multi-Family Development, um, for New Hampshire Housing in Bedford on May twenty-second. Say, uh, vote, say. Yes, I vote, yeah, I vote yes. Yes, okay, good.
You do.
Um, yeah, okay, who wants to make the motion? Okay, we gotta put it all backwards. All right. Good, yeah, well, I mean, if you're willing to do that, that's.
I'll let you know if I, um, I.
There might be, uh, information that you could share with Carter and the rest of their group.
Right, right, well, that's, I've seen it, like, I think it's, I think it'll be really interesting, um.
I, I guess I can see where you're saying that Temple might not be ready.
Um, yeah, I think if you have a personal interest in that thing, that, that.
Okay.
I mean, the definition of multi-family is. I mean, it, does that, is that, is that a house with an ADU attached? So we already have multi-family in Temple now.
Yeah, and it could be a conversion of an existing house. It's not necessarily new or apartment, you know. Yeah, not that.
Differentiated from duplex or an ADU, but it could be, the line can be duplex on up. Look at the exact definition. That's the feeling I got was an ADU was considered non-multi-family, cuz it's kind of meant for the same.
Yeah, yeah, I, if you wanted to see, uh, duplexes being built in our region, out behind Conville High School. They're building out there in Southfield. And, um, those are all, uh, three-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, depending if it's a slabber or basement. But they're all duplexes, that's a four, that's a four hundred thousand dollar. That's what they're selling them for. So that's entry level. Or empty nester are buying these.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's, there's your, in your Mananag region, there's your starter home.
What do the lots say?
I, they're not, they're probably quarter acre lots, they're all right on top of each other. I, I'm pretty sure that, I, I don't know exactly for sure, but I'm guessing it's a, it's an open space cluster. You know, how they did that project up there, there's open space and then they cluster together. I think it's town water, town sewer. But, you know, just, it's the new phase from last year's, you know, it's really well, well done. Uh, might not be the way that any of us wanna live, but you know, it's, it's well done, um. And you can see the new construction, get an idea for what duplexes look like.
Right. I'll spend my lifetime in duplexes in military. Just about every base house is, is a duplex, and so. But, um, I was listening to NPR just, uh, today, I think. In my travels and they were, they were talking about Marketplace was talking about the, you kind of alluded to it, the. The empty nesters or the older folks like me, my wife and I build a very small house, you know, it's less than two thousand square feet, it's probably. Less than fifteen hundred square feet. Nine hundred on the first floor, whatever, whatever you lose for the second floor with the pitch. Um, but, um, you know, that, that, there's a collision between houses, you know, the demand. For folks like me trying to get into housing and the young folks trying to get into two thousand. Yeah, that's a, a mess right now.
Yeah, and the median house price just went up to five hundred and fifteen thousand in the state of New Hampshire for the month of April. Well, yeah, my kids, it's the same thing, cuz I can't move back to where I grew up.
Yeah, all the builders, a lot of the builders I deal with, they build these three-bedroom ranches with the two-car garage attached. It's, it's a popular model right now. And, uh, most all of them were around before COVID, four years ago. They were around three fifty. They're all about seven hundred right now, and four years later, they've doubled in price.
For sale, that's the.
That's, that's what they're selling for.
Was that driven by? Purely supply and demand, or is it driven by cost of building?
The structure, that's a great question.
I think, I think the builders are making a lot more money right now than they ever have before, personally, um. It's amazing with the interest rates where they are. In these prices, that there's still buyers, but where we are here in Southern New Hampshire, people want to live here. And we already had a housing crisis four years ago, you know, or do you have a shortage? But people, these are cash buyers, these are people that are coming from, not from around here. So, you know, I, I guess, you know, we're, we're, if that's, I don't know if that's a gentrification, but it's. We certainly have different people from different states moving in, and a lot of them to our small towns around us.
Work from home.
Yeah. Yep, so anyway, well, uh, anything else? Anybody else have anything?
I had, um, I got a call from Sam Ingram, who you may remember, I can't remember which company he works for out of Milford. Um, surveyor, he asked about, he just had called me and asked what application he should use for a lot line adjustment. So he's preparing one, I don't know when we'll see it or who it's for, that's all I know. I didn't talk to him, he just left me a message and then I left him.
See Fieldstone?
Is he Fieldstone? Is that out of Milford? He did Shelley Guys. Meridian, I think it might be Meridian. Yeah.
Not Sanford.
No.
Those are the, basically the.
I, like I said, I haven't heard anything, I haven't seen anything other than he asked which application for a lot line adjustment. So. I guess I'll send him to Russ when, whenever they're ready to present something. But just know that that may be coming our way. And the other thing we should keep an eye on is the ZBA application for the expansion of the. Storage facility that, I don't know what's happening with it. I just saw the documents on the page today and took a look at it. Um, but that will have to be a site plan review if it gets approved. So just in terms of what could be coming up in the.
I was wondering when that.
Couple of months.
When that was gonna happen.
It did.
So they'll be coming to us.
So they'll be coming to us for a site plan review.
I know when they bought it. From Steve, that, that was their intent.
Yeah.
Was to do that. We'll wait and, we'll wait and see.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know, our summer schedule was the other.
Oh, I.
While we have time, I don't know. So I go like, we will have to think about that with this, if we have an application.
Usually we meet, well, way back in the day, we used to take July and August off completely. Unless somebody had something pressing, then we would call a meeting and we would all come in, you know. Uh, but the last several years, we tried to do one.
Well, the RSA says we have to meet at least once a month. So.
Yeah, that's, so that's, so that's answers that question.
Yeah, so.
I think, uh. I think uh, it would be nice to do like the last or the third.
Yeah, the second meeting.
The second meeting in both months.
Tuesday. Is what we've done the last couple of years.
Yeah, cause the first one is uh.
July second.
Yeah, July second.
Believe me, my calendars. Here either, so, um, yeah. Yeah.
Let's, we keep that in mind, then I guess that's.
Yeah.
Probably the way we'll go, we can both, we don't have to do it now.
Yeah, yeah, I just brought it up because of the applications, so just to keep in mind. Could be coming our way.
Good, well, I don't know anything else. Well, good, we can, I'll take a motion to, accept a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll second.
How do you vote?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Good, you adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. And you're gonna call.